You guys started talking about zoning bylaws and stuff. And I was hoping that you guys could really stop looking at that again because we're asking zoning bylaws that are just, not only just outdated, but really don't make sense. And for me personally, as a member of the ZBA, when people come before us, you know, and you're trying to make decisions and you have a bylaw that's kind of like general and it doesn't make, you know, it can be interpreted, and you know, because we've had conversations before about it, it just seemed to be, you know, it's an interpretation type thing. It's not clear cut, you know? And so I'm hoping that after the new year, you know, that the board might start looking at these again.
Well, I'd be interested to know exactly what areas you're talking about.
Okay, well, there was a list, there was like ten different items on the list.
Two years ago, we asked for feedback. We put a list together. We sent it out. I was chair. I sent it out to the building department. I sent it to zoning. I sent it to all the other boards. And said, we're trying to look at our zoning. We want to prioritize issues, things where we've had problems, questions. Never got a single response.
Okay.
So we put stuff on it.
We put stuff there.
Yeah, we put a list existed.
That's what started. That was back when Karen Paray was on the board.
Oof. So things can be too vague. That's a problem. Also, things could be wrong or inappropriate distances or setbacks or whatever.
Contradictory.
Contradictory or the wrong numbers for these for 2018 or whatever it could be.
Well, my biggest problem is, and I've had conversations with both Mark and Vinny about this, is, you know, like non-conforming lots and, you know, setbacks. And, you know, because a lot was non-conforming and it's been non-conforming for the last 20, 30 years, you know, sometimes even before zoning went into effect, you know? So now we need to try to get it more up to date, as you keep following me.
Well, but that aspect is state law. That's not our local bylaws. That's something the state has to, I mean, the state law rules in that case. But there are a lot of, there's definitely spots. I mean, I've got, we made a list of things that we'd like to.
There was like ten, ten different items. I mean, one of them is like the frontage, you know, you have to have 120 feet of frontage, but it can go down to 100 feet, you know, but they have to come to shore the ZBA.
We actually were thinking of making that not go for the ZBA, but a different permanent.
Or just not have it. Just have it 120 feet. That's it.
And then there's the controversy of the aquifer protection. You know, it says 150 feet of frontage, 50,000 square feet, you know, and it's like, there's nothing, the single residency, you can, you know, the ZBA can, you know, can change that from 120 to 100 or somewhere in between that. They'd have to come for a special. But as far as the aquifer, there's no, nothing there. But there are some people that have tried to say, well, you know, even though it's in the aquifer, it's still the single, you know, and so now it kind of sits in two, two different levels.
Yep.
And so I'd like to see if maybe, you know, when you guys start doing this, is maybe look at that and maybe say, okay, look, regardless of whether it's in the single residency, if it's in the aquifer, it has to be 150 feet, 50,000 square feet. No, here's any spots where the board, you know? And I know that Vinny and I have had conversations about the single residency, you know, maybe we want to change that.
I'm sure we have a lot of things. It'd be great if we could get a bunch of these things and prioritize them and pick, pick the biggest ones off that, like you guys, and this obviously causes problems for you and causes problems for residents. So pick, pick off the big ones or the most important ones first.
I mean, it's, it's a big help when we get petitions and we send you a copy of the petition and you give us feedback, you know? That's, that's a big help. But there are times where even with your feedback, the bylaw is still kind of.
Understood.
So I, I just, you know, I'm hoping that after the first of the year, maybe you guys can stop looking at that again.
And an input from you, ZBA, would be, would be most helpful since you're dealing with it most. Yep.
Mark, if you can find that old.
I was just gonna look, yeah.
That's basically all I have. So thank you for that.
Good idea. You got it on your floppy drives somewhere.
It's on, I think so. It's on the five and a quarter. I have to find the five and a quarter attachment.
Yeah, good idea. Okay. On your dosel here. All right.
I'm not sure.
What's that?
Any other citizens? I'm not sure what the.
Any other citizens or comments? Hearing none. We'll go to old business. Yuha Circle Fence update. We got, we got correspondence about that. And the residents say they don't want a fence.
Yep. That might have been why it wasn't approved. Again, I was, I was recused on this one, so. It was because the DCR owns the whole back area.
It's on the top of a hill.
Yeah, but down the hill is Pleasant Street.
It's right down to Thomas Basin, Pleasant Street.
Okay.
So it wasn't on the plan.
I don't think it was an oversight. I think it was an intentional thing, but it is a question. Like you said, it came up because it was on the list of costs.
I thought there was a, there was a standing water depth that was require a fence and that's what they were.
Well, no, the only reason it came up, the question came up was because in their bond estimate, they, they sent the standard list to VHB and knew, sorry, Mr. Ali's engineer sent a standard list that had amounts on it and that included add a fence for the detention basin, even though it wasn't on the plans.
Oh.
And so VHB said, well, we didn't see a fence on the plan. It's a good idea because it's a basin for safety. And then that's where it brought us up.
Oh, well, then let's.
Would they have had to ask for a waiver to not get a fence?
Um, I don't.
I thought it was a depth of, it could get to a depth that would require a fence, which was like 16 inches or something like that.
See, no, I think it was 18 or 24 inches deep.
Mr. Ali's saying it doesn't get that deep.
Right.
It doesn't get, I think.
But it does have standing water.
It does have standing water and you can.
Right. And if all the butters or a butter that owned closest to it who has kids and they said they wanted a fence, then we could do it, but we've got an email saying they all agree 100% that they don't want a fence. So that's up to you.
And this came from?
I was just gonna ask you that.
Where did this, where did this come from? It says from blank.
From Melanie.
No, no. The original that came in. That's why I was looking at it too.
Uh, I think it was started by VHB.
Yeah, but this was forwarded.
It's from somebody to you.
I've never seen that before.
I didn't either. I just noticed it. So it's like.
So I'm just questioning who said, who said this?
No, I know. It was, it's a woman who was on the open space dog park who is a property owner. She was here before, yeah. She and her husband were both here. She lives down there.
So we should just take her word for it that neighbors don't want a fence? It was certainly never brought up at any of the meetings that we had that they were here.
Well, no, they weren't neighbors yet. They weren't owners because they didn't have houses there.
I mean, when, when people came in here and complained about the various things, that issue was never, was not brought up.
Correct.
And then just let it drop for now.
Well, we have to let them know. So, or you have to let them know that either he needs to do it or he doesn't. Because he said he kind of would do it. I know Raj really likes it. He's got a history with fence and water, that kind of stuff, so. You guys get to vote since you're the ones that are here. Well, I don't even know if you need a vote. You can just.
What do you think?
I, I was gonna say we could give Ali, like if he can come up with a, a letter or something like that that says that the residents don't want the fence, since we're sort of indifferent on it as far as technically required or not, we can let them off the hook, you know, or whatever. We can say you don't need the fence.
Well, it wasn't on the plan, so it's hard to require it when it's not on the plan.
Right. Given, given that. If it was on the plan, then it'd be different.
Then you have to do it and you have to come up with more stuff, but since it wasn't on the approved plan, it's.
So how do we tell him that he's allowed to not do something that he wasn't supposed to do?
Well, it's just to clarify because the question has come up and he's not sure what to do. So you just send them an email and say, the board discussed it. They decided.
Okay, then it's not.
I'll send Mr. O'Leary and I'll tell him that we're not requiring it.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that, especially if the residents would rather it that way anyways.
Doesn't mean the next resident.
No, in this case.
Right. And they can always put a fence up if they're the next door neighbors.
Okay. That's that. 1800 century drive emoji.
Draft letter?
He sent that already, didn't he? A letter, an email?
There was a letter. Did I send it?
I didn't send a letter.
Who was drafting a letter?
I thought you were.
You thought I was?
I thought we.
You can always put it on me and that would explain why it didn't get sent out.
No, we know it's not.
Not yet. Let's see.
No, I thought there was something that we said we just were, because it didn't reflect.
What was Sarah supposed to?
There we go.
Oh, yeah. She's not.
No, 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 no.
It's not a meeting minutes. What, the minutes?
Yeah. Should be the last thing.
There you go. Emoji. Mr. Anderson will draft a letter for the next meeting.
You're making that up.
Clearly the minutes are erroneous.
Completely.
Yeah, because they were wondering like, are we all set? Can we move ahead?
Yeah.
It may be good to.
Start after that one? Get a dunk?
Should we give it to Mark?
That way we know what the problem will be.
He's following the same time.
There wouldn't be any doubt that it wasn't.
So I moved down? Should I get further away?
I guess it's only Mr. Anderson on the board. I guess that's mine. Okay, so that was quick.
Well, I thought it was the other Mr. Anderson too, now that you mention it.
Yeah, my evil twin. Flag RV site plan review. Now, you, you did send that out today, I noticed, but of course it was all today.
Yesterday? I sent, no, I sent that out.
You did, but you, huh?
I sent that out a couple of days ago.
Yes, you did.
Oh, and then I got, and then I sent, so after that draft was sent out, I sent it to the surveyor.
Surveyor.
And Doug in Drysick. And he responded to me this afternoon and I forwarded it off to people this evening. Don't worry about it. He basically said, there's, their engineers reviewing a drainage system for the roof and the impervious area. But it's on us. We haven't finished this yet. So we leave that condition in there and.
We'll leave the condition and not hold back the approval until it's done? We'll leave the condition.
Minutes, one of those.
I just feel like if we do that, there's a chance that nothing happens.
Well, there's a whole lot of other things in the approval letter to make sure or try to encourage things to happen. So that's.
Well, I read a little bit of it.
Yeah, I know. It was a little for both.
It was? It was, I was impressed with the detail in that one. Okay, so.
All right, so we.
So we're, we're waiting for information from them.
We can, you want to do the letter as is?
Sign and, do we have a letter here?
I have a copy.
The yellow?
What edits?
Left and yellow.
Yeah, why not? I mean, those are the ones that people need to pay attention to.
Are we going to mention in the letter what the yellow highlighting is for? Or we just assume that people will know what it is for?
What, all the people that review these?
Unless they'll read them.
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking is, because those are the ones that they may not. Like the planning board approved the site plan parking areas and traffic circulation, blah, blah, blah. But then the final grading shall not worsen anything. Those are all the standard ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then that's the biggies.
And that's, that's for Flag RV and their associates to understand that these are issues. Yeah, that's fine.
And we can send, and this is going to, did I have it, it's gotta go to the building inspector? So that he's aware and that would be good to have the yellows so he can see that.
Okay. I read this and I.
Oh, it didn't, it doesn't say going to the building inspector.
I found, I found no, I found no problems with this. I, and I appreciate the level of detail. So I will entertain motions to approve this draft for the certificate of site plan review and stormwater management approval for the Flag RV Center, West Boylston Street. You made an motion?
As you said.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Well, we have to. Isn't that how it always works?
You didn't add it on.
Yeah, it's not listed. Well, there's the list of CCs.
Are there two things we're supposed to do?
It's everyone who gets, there is no.
Oh, no, just, that's just voted as. Okay. Nope, we're good.
It's, you're right. We haven't in the past had CCs on there. It might be a good idea to do that.
You could just add applicant proposal site owner CC. Because it's not really a place of the, oh, we could write the end too, I guess.
Well, I mean, it's what we do. It goes to the town clerk, so that's all that really matters.
Standard procedure.
But we just make sure we send, give it out to all the people that are in need of it, like the fire department. Because they, they talked about the circulation and that kind of stuff.
Who else will go to that?
Police, fire, building inspector, conservation commission, because.
Like water district and light plant or?
Oh, the light, municipal light plant because of the lighting question in there.
Oh, I mean, in general.
Just like when we circulate the requests for comments.
Everyone gets the plans, gets that.
Whoever gets it, yeah.
Can we sign this down?
Yes.
This one, this one good?
Yeah, whatever.
And then we say yes or no here. Right?
And then absent.
But if you're absent, how can you write absent?
Well, do we write absent for them?
No.
I have a pen.
Yes.
So I could change my answer later.
You just said that in the public meeting. Another sent you for you. You have a pen?
Yeah.
Okay.
My favorite pen.
You got the page before too? Previous page.
Should I sign it with a Sharpie?
No. Your famous red Sharpie.
We could sign the plans tonight, but since we only have three, why don't we wait till we get another? Put, put sign plans on the next meeting.
Okay. We done?
I think so.
About zoning.
We haven't. I don't know that we've done anything on it.
We have not.
All right, so we continue that.
And we're waiting for.
Oh, what we talked about? Yes, that would be good. Email those out? Yes.
Someone's gonna drop off my house.
We wanted CMRPC to redo their wording.
I think they did. Didn't he say something? He was working on a revised map showing the current uses.
Well, we got that, but then given the feedback we got from the previous, previous meetings, public meetings, they were gonna reword some of the wording because people objected to setbacks and things like that.
A lack of setbacks, yeah.
Correct. Lack of setbacks.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. So we can follow up.
Yeah, because we, we need that information in writing from them before we have another forum.
Yes, please.
Holy cross. I did finally send them a letter, but haven't heard back. There's nothing else to really review, right?
If they haven't replied, no?
Right. Police station.
There was something about that with the parking? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
And nothing has come of it yet, like it is?
Right. I just sent it out this week.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, yes. So we have a. Well, this is a letter from Butch for the privacy fence. Yeah. So we have a letter here from Butch Jackson about the fence on private property.
Police station one.
For the police station.
Yeah, that's the one.
So. Is this all we need then? Is to put this letter along with the plans? Or do we have any further action that we need to take on this? You know, I think we had said that all we needed was a explanation about the fence and the fact that it wasn't on the, it was part of the project, but not on the property. Interesting situation.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I, I don't think we're gonna get much more out of the whole deal.
No.
This is what we're gonna get, you know? I mean, and just to put this in the file just shows that it happened and.
It was part of the project. Here's the reason it was done. Who is responsible for maintaining it? Pretty clear.
Yep, put it in the file.
Right, I think it's, these forms state that the fence is being constructed at the request of homeowners previously listed to create privacy between their homes and the adjoining newly constructed police station, which is exactly the point of.
Right.
But I think we're, we're good to go. It's a little subtle. I mean, we'd rather a drawing or something, but that's okay. We're good. I'd say we're good.
I think we're good with this. So do we take the original letter, put it with the plans?
Do you want a second copy?
No?
All we need is a copy of that in the file.
Yeah, okay.
Want a copy?
Oh, oh, she has one. She has plenty. And if she runs out, she can make more, right? Okay. All right. Outside consultant fees policy.
Oh, yeah. Did you print out the mostly recent email? I was gonna do that and I forgot to. I need to contact the town council.
Oh, that came in, that, that just came in, right? Oh, this one?
This one? Consultant fund rules?
That's the one you're talking about?
Yes. So. Anita writes, please see the town council's confirmation that we must have a contract with VHB or any future engineering firm. And then I decided I'd read the actual comments from town council. The town council says, in my opinion, the contract is exempt from requirements of general laws 3030B. However, even though it's exempt, in my opinion, the town should have a written contract with VHB governing its relationship and the term should not exceed three years as a matter of policy. So if it's exempt, it's exempt. We have an, we have an existing contract that everybody's honoring. Do we want to go through it? I mean, that's, I, I guess I just take
Right.
the comments made by McInnany Town Council and it's not a must. We're exempt for it. And so all the things that he follows up with saying, you need to do this under section 30B, under this under 30B and under this 30B, you have to do all these different things.
Right.
30B is, doesn't apply.
Why are we exempt?
I, he didn't say that.
I don't know. However, since the contract is for services of a licensed engineer, provides the contract is exempt.
Oh.
But if we want to, I mean, it's fine if we want to update the contract.
How, how has that been done? Has it been done by a new set of signatures?
Yes. In 2010, we talked to VHB. They were questioning what their accounts were. And so they wanted to have more security.
Yep.
Because our contract at that point was from 2003.
Right.
So in 2010, who was our town administrator at that time, Leon Galmann reviewed it and he was, he was big into contracts. That's what he did with the municipal association. And so he reviewed it and we just updated the timelines and I think we put a, a little increase in the fees of like a 10% increase in the fees and he signed off and VHB signed off.
It was a new contract. It wasn't just.
It was a continuation of the existing contract.
Okay, and nothing since then?
And we have nothing since then.
Okay, so it's been eight years. So we would hope we do the same sort of thing?
We were thinking, yeah, and I talked with Wayne and he said he'd be happy to update the contract. If it goes out to bid, you'd have to go with their full rates. If it gets an update, he'd be willing to talk about holding the same rates or a little bit more. But, so he was open to it.
So given that, what's our next step?
So I think.
Somebody would.
We're looking for a contract.
Contract that is basically the old contract.
Yeah, well, she has a copy of the old contract. It has the old information. So please provide a scope of work which the board wishes to be inserted in the contract. I'm pretty sure that's in the old contract that she has in her files.
Yep.
So I think we just need to have discussed it here and if there's, if you have questions or if you don't agree with me or whatever, we talk about it and then once we get a decision, the chair goes and talks to Anita or emails Anita and says, yep, you forward on.
Something.
A contract.
Okay.
Because it can either be a contract or we could put it out to bid, request for proposals. I mean, it's, we can go either way.
While the town is not required to solicit bids or proposals, the town certainly could if you wish to do so.
We can always do that, right? No matter what. We got a comment from the peanut gallery.
What?
I'm sorry.
He's a, he's a professional engineer. He's got experience with this stuff, so.
We're actually the planning board's consultant for Westminster. And so each time they get an application, they send us the full application and ask for a letter proposal specific to that project.
Oh, really?
So if it's simple, like we just did a reduced frontage subdivision review. It was like $900. And so I think what West Boylston required was standard deposit for every project, right?
At least on size, yeah.
Yeah, so we find that works pretty well. And, you know, we have, usually typically have two phases. The design review is this and construction monitoring is that. And so depending on the scope of the project, they get a proposal from us and typically another engineer and then the board picks which one. And so it seems to work well. Boylston does the same thing with us.
What do they give you to bid on? Just the application?
So the town board will send me the application packet and the plans and say, this is the project. Can I have a proposal back in a week? And then the board picks somebody and signs that letter proposal each time.
And we've got something similar that.
Yeah, I mean, we do the same thing. It's just that we just send everything to VHB.
Yes, you, do you authorize this? And you reply to their email.
Okay, so we do vote on this?
Nope. No, you just have to contact Anita or assign it to somebody to contact Anita.
She's also, can the board please provide a scope of work?
Yeah, but that's why I think.
Is the scope of work in the existing contract?
It's already in the contract.
Oh, it's already in there? Okay.
I mean, we had a contract three times now, so it's.
Yeah.
Originally, it was 1998 and then it was reviewed and updated in 2003 and then it was updated again in 2010.
Okay. Would you like me to contact Anita?
We could try to have McCarty bid on it, except that he's doing every job in town.
You like it here.
Yeah. One more DNS, trying to DNS real quick.
Okay. But that wasn't the outside control agency's policy, was it?
Yes.
Uh, the, the next one will take a little while. A bit list of zoning violations.
Oh, okay, yeah. Why don't we move on to people who are here?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Are there any?
Oh, the only, the only other follow up on that I just saw on the pile is the revised fee schedule.
Yes, that's, yeah.
Oh, I thought that was part of that other.
No, that's, that's a, no, that's a different thing that we need to hold a public hearing.
Oh, we do?
A year ago, they asked about updating this based on some law. Well, we, we met almost every single thing about it except for the last line in this whole document. And so we got that, we had that C-attached planning board consultant contract. So we had to refer, we had to establish a policy and then refer to the schedule from the policy. That's what we had to do, but we were pretty much on top of everything there. And so we need to review and hold, because we're looking at fees, we have to hold a public hearing. Doesn't have to be town meeting vote. It's a.
This is, says C-attached planning board consultant on rules. That's not this, it's not referring to itself, is it?
Nope.
What's the, what's the planning board consultant fund rules?
I think it's an attempt.
That's this, right?
Yeah, it's either a policy or the rules, yes.
Oh, that's this one, oh, that's this one.
Do we not have that one in our package?
No, I think we do.
No, I got that one too. Okay, consultants, okay.
Okay, so I guess we should schedule a public hearing.
At our, yeah, at our next meeting probably, if people can review these.
Is there enough time for a notification?
You still leave it in the draft?
No, I don't think so. Oh, wait.
For January, uh.
We skip, we have four weeks then, right? Okay, so yeah, there is.
Well, I was, I was gonna try to put it out there, if we do it with a scratch out, the strikeout.
Do you wanna leave it like this?
People can see what it was and what the changes are. That's always easier for me.
Yeah.
So our next meeting is January ninth?
Yes, it is, but let's see.
Are we following, right?
Yeah, we won't be, oh no, sorry, not the ninth, the twenty-third we won't be. So the ninth, and then twelve twenty-six, so I have to go in to twelve twenty-six, and then by twelve twenty-one. So I put in by twelve twenty-one, and we can have it advertised the twenty-sixth and the second, and have it on the ninth.
Is that good?
Good.
Do that?
I mean, it's not, I, I don't imagine it's not gonna take a lot of time.
It shouldn't take a long time, if we can get people's comments, that would be.
My ass, not with the hearing notice, so, okay.
Yep, we can do that.
So we need to put, we need to put this on the website?
Um, it's gonna be advertised, I don't.
Well, the general, just of it'll be advertised.
Let me go through and make sure it's everything, the only big items, I'm not sure what you guys thought, I bumped things up cause these weren't, the last time these were done was five years ago.
Yep.
So I bumped things up a little bit, but I reduced the Form A lots, the A and Rs.
Right.
Just because that oftentimes is homeowners coming in just trying to buy the property or correct the problems, so we dropped that by a hundred dollars. And then the rest is just our regular fee schedule that we have. We're talking about asking, and that's gonna be at the end of this meeting, we're gonna talk about our budget, and we have a line item in the budget of thirty-three hundred dollars or so.
Is it on that?
It's on that spread sheet, but somewhere in the three thousand area.
Yes.
We're gonna ask for more because we spent on all the public hearings, zoning changes, more zoning changes that are probably gonna be coming. We don't get any review fees, so we have to pay for public hearing notices, time, minutes, all that other stuff, so we wanted to, for town business, we really can't charge applicants for that.
Right, right.
So.
Trying.
That's why we wanted to try to up, up our budget from the town meeting.
Right. That's next door, though.
Have to do that.
Alright, so we're set for scheduling that for the, for the ninth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, so.
Fuller, number two?
Number two, Rob Fuller to discuss industrial commercial product.
What we have? Good evening.
Good evening.
Patrick McCarty for the record, McCarty Engineering, and Rob Fuller. Talk about another project in the Hartwell Street area that we'd like to do, so, Mr. Fuller has the ownership of the parcel that's on the backside of the tracks across from the, the American Legion Hall.
Where am I in here?
So, uh, Shrewsbury Street's down here.
Shrewsbury.
Hartwell Street.
Hartwell is okay, alright.
Here's the railroad tracks, so you come over the bridge and the Legion's over here.
Yep.
Oh, okay, alright.
In the baseball field, so it's all.
Yep, this is the, this is the baseball field here, and then these, this is the plans that were just submitted this evening, that's item number three. So, have a really large parcel of land, about sixteen and a half acres, um, that runs parallel to the railroad tracks, actually all the way back here off, off the paper. Um, that we'd like to do two industrial, two large industrial buildings, one fifty thousand, one fifty-six thousand, thereabouts, I mean, the detailed design isn't completed. Um, right now, there's, there is two lots here, one is about three acres here, and then the other thirteen is down here. The yellow highlight represents Mr. Fuller's property, railroad tracks and the bridge, and then the continuation of Mr. Fuller's property and all the way out to Shrewsbury Street.
He owns both of these lots?
Yes.
You do? Okay.
So, under, we could, one way we could do this would be to come in and request a special permit for an industrial park that would allow two buildings on one lot serviced by a common driveway. The hardship of that is that to be able to sell these to two individual corporations.
That's a plan, okay.
Yeah, build them and sell them, um, you'd be able to sell individual buildings, but they'd have to own the land in common ownership like a condo association, which isn't extremely attractive to a large company, and for, you know, a fifty thousand square foot building, they're talking a five to eight million dollar investment in each one of these facilities. So to be able to own it clear and outright is obviously more attractive to them. So we have two hundred and eighty-six feet of continuous frontage, then the railroad bridge that interrupts us, and then we have continuing frontage all the way out to, um, Shrewsbury Street.
But not continuous?
It's not continuous, yeah, we're, we're broken by the.
The train.
The train, it's, it's strange that this piece is owned fee simple by the railroad, um, they own this five foot strip here and a five foot strip there, but then they have an easement here, it's, it's strange, all the way down, to say the least.
And that bizarre A and R with the weird property layout?
Yes, I don't know why he did that, but I get twenty-seven tax bills a year, I don't.
Yeah, we're trying to straighten that all out, so we've got, we, we have a master plan together for the, for all of the parcels from the self-storage, to the baseball facility, to the house that was torn down, to now the houses on the corner and wrapping all the way around and including this.
They closed on those today.
Oh, crazy.
So we have a master plan really for this whole area, we've updated that, we've submitted it to DCR, we've submitted it to MEPA, we're going through that whole process, and the next step is really to get into the detailed site plans. And so we've, we've, we're stuck at this point here.
So you would never have.
There's an avenue to do the two buildings that we wanna do, and, you know, we're hopeful that the board would submit, would support that special permit, I mean, I think that anybody would be excited to have another ten million dollars of industrial development in town and the jobs that come along with it. The issue is the, the ownership, so.
Yeah.
Standing on Hartwell Street, looking at the property, it's gonna look exactly the same, whether we go the special permit avenue or we find a way to address the frontage that's broken by the railroad.
So what you're, what you're trying to say is that you're gonna use some of this frontage up here for one of the properties?
Well, it's not, it's not contiguous, it's broken by this privately owned parcel, that's, that's, so you can, you can't, you can't do that.
So technically, this doesn't count then, right?
It doesn't count.
Yeah.
So, but you said you had two lots there already?
We had two lots there already, but now we're changing a non-conforming.
How much you, so you're two.
We're short fourteen feet of frontage.
Right, but it's already in existence, oh no, he owns both.
It's, yeah, so it's basically seven feet on each lot.
And it's in the same name, there's no.
Yes, and the, the big question was the bridge, the bridge has been a nightmare anyway, but it's privately owned, and they said that if there was no bridge there, the continuance thing would be an issue because you have to drive over the railroad tracks here, the railroad company owns the bridge, so.
Yeah, I, I think that, that more typically would have been a, an easement, you know, like you have here, but they own this fee simple.
Right. Because of the bridge. So if it wasn't for the bridge that was owned by the railroad company, that's usually owned by the town, it would be an easement.
Could you, could you connect this, this, the latter half of property through, to this property through there?
No, they own these two five foot strips.
Oh.
So it's, the way I'm looking at it is, it's, it's unique shape of the lot that's interrupted by the bridge, I, I think that, you know, potentially a variance could be granted, of course, we can't get to the ZBA until we actually submit and get denied.
And we went to them and they said to come to see you.
Yeah, and that, you know, we tried to go have an informal meeting with them, understandably, they're, you know, on appellate board, so they can't have the conversation that we're having here.
So the meeting that I have with Anita, she said, with all of the land that we're accessing, it's not like we're, we're asking for a seven foot variance to access two acres, we're accessing sixteen and a half acres.
Is that second owner gonna own everything besides the front?
Yes, so one lot will be three acres and the other lot will be thirteen acres.
Yeah, this is the proposed lot line here, so they'd have a common access and utility easement, and then it would split at the parking lots.
So the people that were, have interested in the buildings, this gentleman, this company would like to do solar panels on the back, sell electricity to both buildings, so there's a plan, like you said, and when DCR took this back lot, if they had just.
Given you know, five feet.
We wouldn't be sitting here.
Well, yeah, fourteen feet, yeah, we, we wouldn't be sitting here.
So.
So I think that it, you know, it follows the spirit of the, the ordinance, because really the design isn't gonna change, the, the use isn't gonna change, it's just a regular, um, lot shape and surrounding circumstances.
And that's really the only place that touches a road?
Yep.
Other than the other side, I mean, if, if we wanted to.
The other half of the land.
Right, we could take away when we're developing, so we're, we're buying Pierce's land too from Sam, um, the Prescott.
Yeah.
Across the street.
Oh, really, okay.
So we'll be closing on that right after the first of the year for his reasons.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, if we have to cheat, I mean, if you guys say, yeah, you can do this, but you can only have X amount of frontage, it, it really doesn't matter, to be honest with you, with the plans that we've got, cause we're just gonna use that for parking anyway.
Well, that, this is all wet, so we're not moving out of anything there, that's true.
It's all winter, so, yeah, it's useless frontage.
Yeah.
But it's just a shame to have all this development stop, I mean, that's really the only development, that is the only development on this.
That you can do.
Yeah, so you really can't do anything unless you own an industrial park, which wouldn't be an issue except for, I mean, I wouldn't wanna buy a building that's, I wouldn't want to invest in a building sitting on land that I share with somebody.
But you can't own.
So you're gonna share utilities, you're gonna share drainage, all that stuff, so there'd be an agreement for that.
Yep. Yeah, there'd be an easement, and, and you know, a maintenance agreement between the two facilities, but they would each own their lot fee simple, you know, mortgage.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
You know, all that stuff gets involved, and at the bank. You know, would have collateral position over a lot and a lot versus a building and a portion of a commonly owned lot.
Right, it's a lot easier to.
It does, it is a lot easier.
Yes.
And in the bylaws, they're allowed to do parking between two property lines, I think it says that, as long as there's an agreement in the document.
Yes, yep.
So that is fine.
Yeah, and this is, this is conceptual, I mean, we have a lot of, you know, the nut and bolt engineering to work out, but this is the end game goal right here.
No, but it's still good.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Right.
And we just don't wanna go all through, cause we're in the stage right now for MEPA and DCR, and we wouldn't wanna continue on if you guys say, hey, this can't happen.
I was trying to think of some suggestion to make it an easier variance or something, like provide all of the frontage to the, the one that's got the driveway, and then, I don't know, share the front, somehow say, this is part of the property, I don't know.
That's how Brian drew it, is one lot is a hundred and fifty and one's a hundred and thirty-six, so one lot has the area for frontage and that, but there's another doctrine that's infectious invalidity, you guys ever heard of that, or, Lenny's heard of that?
Yeah, so, so basically because, they're breaking this up, and they're creating that situation, so it's, it's still, that other one is still, the one that, even though it meets the standard, it's still invalid, cause you can't make.
It's infected by this one, unless we get a variance, or, yeah, so we'd need a variance on.
This lot?
On that lot.
Not this one?
Well, it's a combination, it doesn't, you can't, you can't make this one non-compliant, so, since you can't make this non-compliant, that one over there can't be created to start with, that's kind of the understanding.
It's called zoning misbehavior.
Yeah.
Believe me, I, I went through a eight-year legal battle in Lunenburg over this from, you know, a client had bought a piece of land where the previous guy owned the building in his company and the backland in his personal name, showed a line on the A and R plan, got site plan approval, then went to foreclosure and sold off the backland to satisfy the debt, but left that fifty foot strip, but he never did a deed from one to the other, so, oh, it was a made a nightmare.
Yeah, it's, cause it's the deed.
That's why I learned infectious invalidity very well.
And that's what I was thinking, I would've thought you'd buy it and kept it kind of separate, in two different.
If, even if Rob bought it as Rob Fuller Inc. and LFR, it's still, he's still the principal of the two entities.
Are they going that way? Cause I thought it was, if you put in Rob Fuller and Robert Fuller, it was a different name on the deed.
No. No, if it's the same principal of the two.
That's changing, it's been years for, luckily, then I'd have to deal with it, so that's good.
I mean, this is the cleanest way.
It does, but.
So does this cause any problems for the town?
It has to go to a variance. And actually, I mean, you guys know I work for the DCR, so take everything with a grain of salt.
Sure.
Um, but we can't approve it, it has to go to a variance, but I don't know, I don't know that we would create any problems, it makes sense, it's a smart, it's the best way to do it, but getting a variance is required, cause, sorry, cause we can't vary that.
Yeah, you can't sign, you can't sign an A and R plan that doesn't have requisite frontage.
Well, you shouldn't.
It's not valid, even if you do, it's not valid. So. Option one is to, to go and, um, request this, get denied, go to the ZBA, we would hope that when the ZBA asks for comments from the planning board, say that the applicants come in and inform and review this with us, and it seems to make sense for this particular lot in this location because of the site constraints, so that you're not setting a precedent for.
Yeah, whatever the three, the, the benefit to the town is that it's business in town, the, it's not detrimental.
Yep. It's consistent with the spirit of the zoning ordinance, um, and then hopefully we can go to zoning board and convince them of that. If not, we would have to then.
That sounds fair to me.
We would have to then come back and ask for the special permit for the industrial park, which.
It's not a big deal, I mean, a special permit isn't a variance standard, a special permit is, you, you basically have it with conditions, as long as it's safe and.
Yes.
Built, I mean, you don't have, it should be easy with no neighbors.
Yep.
It's not a business center, it's a.
Industrial park.
Industrial park.
It's the same thing as a business.
We're gonna put a, I think the original plan I brought a year ago had eight buildings back there, and I was gonna own it, lease it out,
Yeah, or something.
Then this whole cannabis thing blows up and people are looking for big buildings, and it's like, holy moses, so now I'm back here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I could give a little insight to that too, if you guys wanna know on the cannabis side of things, just in general.
Okay, I mean, sure, but it doesn't.
It's not, not germane to this, but, um, so we, as you know, Fitchburg's kind of become a cannabis hub, so we were the first ones to permit a project in Fitchburg back in.
Was that your project?
Two thousand fifteen, the Garden Remedies project on Airport Road, it was, it used to be Asher Pants, and I was doing wire, and then it, it became Garden Remedies, which is an eighty thousand square foot cultivation facility, they've been in operation since, uh, March of fifteen, so they're coming up on four years. No complaints, no security issues, they kept New England Wire on it, it, medical and now recreational.
Medical, is everyone? Okay.
Uh, and they kept the New England Wire sign up for the first two years, and literally no one knows they're there. They're super high-tech, if you went into these places, to get in, I get buzzed in the front door, I get checked in at security, they scan my license, even though they know me, I gown up, I go through an air shower, and you go in and it's all scientists, and it's state-of-the-art HVAC, state-of-the-art lighting, and it's, it's super high-tech, it's not the general perception that you see, uh, and that's what these large buildings would be ideal for, so it, it's a good benefit to the town, cause they're good jobs, they're kind of high-tech, in a sense.
Yeah, they're looking at twenty billion dollars.
Yeah.
It's not just hippies growing flowers.
No. Everybody's in scrubs, everybody's wearing hats, everybody's wearing the beard masks, I mean, it's really high-tech, and the, the cultivation facilities see no, public traffic.
Right, exactly, none, yeah.
None, so you get the benefit of the community host agreement without the issues that you're seeing.
The security and the traffic and the.
Yeah. And I, and I think the dispensary is.
Over that bridge.
Everybody's seeing Leicester right now and Northampton, it's because they're the only two, but as all these other ones open up, that's all gonna, it's, it's the looness of it, it's a fad.
Right. Right.
Salem's opening up this weekend.
Yeah, that's right.
Exactly. So when is zoning boards next, you say January ninth?
I don't know.
No.
Your next meeting is beginning?
January seventeenth. And just so you know, anytime we get a, any kind of petition, we all, we help, we send it to, to the planning board, to the.
Oh, sure, sure.
We send it to the planning board, to water help, and to conservation, just to get an input, to require them.
Yeah, we, we, we were here tonight so that they were informed, so that they were, when they receive that.
I understand.
That's good.
Um, you know, it's clear in their mind what we're trying to accomplish, and then hopefully that, you know, we have a avenue A or B, and it seems like no one's in violent opposition to either avenue.
No.
No, that seems to make sense.
Just make sure that you read what is required of the.
What are the three things?
He's been through it a bunch of times, it's, it's a stan, it's a tough standard, but you can be met.
Oh, yeah.
He's been through it a bunch of times, it's, it's a sta, it's a tough standard, but you can be met.
Yep.
Um, the bridge, there's a weight limit and access, are you guys okay with all that stuff with the?
Yeah, it's a hundred thousand pound limit.
Hundred thousand, really?
Mm-hmm. It's a fifty-ton bridge.
Okay, all right, so that's no problem.
It's a, it's one lane, right?
Mm-hmm. One wide lane, yeah.
Wide lane, but, yeah, so it's okay.
And visibility is okay?
Yeah.
Would it make sense to improve visibility, I'm just thinking, when you come in for the site plan review, if, I remember there's a, I think it's on the Legion side, it, it kind of drops a little and then comes back up, but just make sure the sight line is good coming in to the bridge.
Like over here?
No, the, the, it, the bridge is cambered.
Right, so you just gotta make sure you have the sight line.
So, and then it, yeah, then it drops, and then you climb back up this way, so you kind of come to a low point in the road, come over the camber of the bridge, and then keep on the mountain.
There's not like a, a blind spot over the bridge, like if someone come, as long as you can see someone else coming on the bridge is all on there.
And there's not a lot of people going down that bridge anyway.
Well, there's not many now, but.
Right, well, right.
How many employees do you think you'd have?
Forty.
Yeah.
To start, I think this size facility, you could probably see eighty at full capacity in this building, so.
That's, so it gets some traffic.
Yeah.
Not terrible.
Not terrible, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, but.
Tractor trailer access?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's fine, it would be one lane, so, you know, you don't have.
Yeah, I mean, the hundred thousand's over a, a normal truck, eighty thousand pound truck.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and you really don't have a lot of tractor trailer.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a maximum, yeah.
You're gonna have soils coming in, and you're gonna have soils going out, is your biggest thing, everything else is, is seeds, right, so you have seeds, you go through the different state, the different rooms to when it's harvested, and then it's packaged and delivered
Oh, yeah.
in small vehicles from here to the dispensaries.
And they only make the plants, they don't make the other things?
They could make oils.
Yeah.
Right. Or the other foods, the edible.
Just keep reading the newspaper.
Whatever.
We just permitted one, we got the only license in Harvard.
Harvard?
Yeah.
Wow.
They only did one?
Yeah, they had one for the whole town.
Of anything, production or retail?
Anything. Yep, so we're doing, and it's only thirty-five hundred square feet CO2 extraction. So you're talking a couple storage totes a day of product going in and vials of oil going in.
Oh, yeah. Seal, too. Oh, okay.
It's a half a million dollar machine, half the size of this table, that'll extract the oil.
It can process that much.
Yeah, interesting industry.
I guess, yes.
Okay.
All right, guys, well, thank you very much for your time.
We're good.
Do, do you need a letter or something like that, say, or did you?
No, so, it, we're gonna file with zoning for a variance, and then.
We'll wait, yeah.
Okay.
Wait for them to contact us, yeah.
Then we'll, yes.
Okay.
Do it quick.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have our next meeting before yours, so.
And you'll have it before they, or by the.
Yeah.
Right, because we'll be able to draft a letter at our next meeting, we're reviewing.
Yes. Right.
Does West Wilson have a form of intent, like some towns have a form of intent where you submit it, and the building inspector uses that to deny it?
Yeah, the building inspector does.
Okay.
For a building permit, you mean, not for a ZBA application, it's a petition, a ZBA petition, it is there.
Yeah, but you need a denial from the building inspector.
Right. Right, so I think you just go in and talk to him, that's probably the easiest way.
And then he sends it to us.
Who is the building inspector now?
George is still acting, we finally got a permit for Hartwell Street.
He's, he got, he got hired now.
Okay, five months in.
Oh, we heard him?
For which one, for the, uh?
He's hired.
For C, the CEA buildings.
See, okay.
Okay, good.
Did you, what happened then?
We didn't have a building permit.
But you're building.
We filed, Bentley left, Chris was acting, and Chris basically said he didn't have time to review it, and I said, well, I'm just gonna keep building. And he said, okay, and he came out for one inspection, and then George was in, and then George was out, and then George is back in again.
What, 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 what building are we talking about?
The Hartwell Street.
Old Town, yeah, the Old Town Hall building.
The Old Town Hall, they expanded, you have a site plan review, it seems like it's going okay, except for the town side.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. No, it's going great, yeah, we're, we're hoping to be done in March.
Is Mike on that one?
Hmm?
Mike?
No, Mike's down in Norwood, and we took over a problem project down there, so I sent Mike, I want Mike down there, yeah.
Sent him down, good, he was good over on Cutler, I mean, uh, not Cutler, yeah, Cutler's seventy, Hartwell.
Curtis.
Curtis.
Curtis, I knew it was a C one, that's why it didn't sound right.
Yes.
Is that one done?
Well, yeah, they, we finished.
As far as I'm concerned?
Oh, yeah, that's.
Finished September of last year.
Yeah, we gave him a certificate of completion.
I know, I drove around back there, and I mean, it looks all set.
Yeah, and if you want.
How'd you do with the rain this summer, the five inches of rain, did it wash out that slope again, or?
Nope, where we arm it, it's been perfect.
Yeah, good, okay.
Yep.
It had a lot of rain this fall.
It's been torture, we lost thirty-nine working days from September first until December first.
Oh, yeah, it was raining, it rained every day.
Yeah, those are my working days, that's what I go over.
Yeah.
It was, are you working?
We did a lot of SWIP inspections.
Yes, that's exactly it, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thanks for coming in, yeah.
Thank you. We'll get this submitted right away.
Oh, he had a question, uh, someone said, it's, uh, U-Haul trailers over on the front, is there, what's going on with the one fifty, no, not, it's, it's one thirty-seven, one fifty-one, and I thought there was another one there, there are three lots?
Wait, and then you submitted?
Oh. Yeah.
That's your next item. We submitted site plans, that is your next action item actually, to schedule them, so maybe we should wait for a second.
RJF?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the storage units are all done and complete, that's finished, or is that still potentially?
Topco.
Yeah, we do topco, we're probably gonna put a couple more buildings in eventually.
Okay, because we've got an open, uh, site plan review, so, and then next to that, some, you said you saw.
Yep.
There's some U-Haul trucks parked, is that a U-Haul business, or is that a, what is that?
No, they just wear us out to rent their U-Haul trucks, it's the biggest waste of time I've ever been involved in my life.
For the, it's part of the storage facility.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so they.
You offer that as a service?
Pretty much, so they drop trucks.
So they park them?
Yeah, they park them and then.
Yeah, so we may wanna add that to the parking that's in, uh, next one.
It's, they don't, I don't have that, it's not enough for the time, no, they'll be gone.
It's not gonna last long, okay, is that, I was just looking at the parking, okay?
Yeah, we get too involved in that.
All right, so.
We're gonna find other places to park their trucks, they got quite the gig, they don't have any buildings, they don't have any land fees, they don't have any employee fees, and they give you ten percent.
They just leave my places. What if you?
It's crazy.
So people come and they say, I have a lot of stuff at my house, but I don't have no way of getting a drink.
What, what I was hoping to do is use that e-commerce, you know, U-Haul Center, Massachusetts, Sabres Perisal Storage, hey, it's mentioned that they're gonna do a storage facility, but how they list us online is U-Haul Center and West Boyles Street.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, really?
So they don't even use my company name, so the e-commerce thing kind of.
Go away.
Yeah, it's like their trucks are gonna go away.
Yeah, okay, good.
Oh, yeah, while you're here, hearing notice.
Yeah, so. This is for, um. No, this one, this one. This one here, yeah, this one.
I saw it, I've had it, and I moved.
You're looking for this?
As long as it looks good to you, I think I read, I read it once already, so it should be fine.
For Wednesday, January twenty-third at seven PM, site number U, application.
It's up front.
Is that the first available?
Yes.
Ah, come on.
Yes.
You know, last, the luck doesn't stop us.
No, I had, you have, they have to have thirty days to look at the plans, so I've already, I've already distributed the plans.
Okay.
I did that over the weekend, so they've already, everybody's already got their plans.
Right, that's, that's for the two, the two builders.
Yeah, what's RJF?
First one.
That's him.
Rob Fuller.
Fuller.
Rob Fuller.
Oh, I thought it was a different name, how many companies are there?
That's three, yeah.
Okay.
Depends on the day.
All right, so it's.
Okay.
Booked the community host meeting to January third.
For the one of these?
I know.
For the recreational dispensary in the corner, it's gonna be at the manor at six thirty, January third, Thursday.
You already booked that?
Yes, just today.
Is that in the site plan review?
No, that's another lot.
No.
That's different.
Brian hasn't drawn those yet.
He's gonna get going, what's he doing?
If you know any engineers that want a job, send them my way, it's impossible, everyone, we try to get, we get to the end line, and then they go to give their notice, and the company they're at throws crazy money at them to stay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, four times this summer.
Really?
Wow. You'd offer them the crazy money?
I did, give me.
Sorry, do you need a copy of this?
That'd be great.
Yeah, and Wayne Amigo has to get a copy of that too.
Wayne has a.
Wayne has the plans I read.
He sent him the plans, right?
I didn't send Wayne the plans.
Oh, can you email Wayne the plans, just email the electronic stuff to him?
Electronic copy, did you send to Wayne?
I got an email from somebody that works for Wayne saying that they were gonna be the reviewer.
Then he.
They were traffic engineer, transportation designer, which I thought was strength in the title, but.
Yeah, he's, like you said, booked, you know, looking for bodies to do the work.
I did send them to him.
Yeah.
I didn't send them electronically.
Maybe Justin did.
Well, did you, did you tell him that there was a project?
Probably.
Because he might have just.
Which one, which one did you approve, he asked if this was going, I thought there was one that he said it was.
Yeah, that was, uh.
So what would then be strike five?
Yeah, with this one, yeah.
I'll make sure VHB has a copy.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay.
See you next week.
Yeah, pretty soon.
Yeah. This is, yeah, RJF Properties, Shrewsbury and Earl Street.
Plan.
So the one that he's submitting, where's that property, is that this one he was just talking about?
It's one fifty-one, I'm sorry, I don't know what the number is, there's the baseball place, it's next to the baseball place, so you got the storage units, the baseball place, and then this one.
Yeah. Oh, right, on the corner kind of?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
These two buildings are not at the corner.
No, these two are behind, the baseball place comes up, and then there's the, the residential properties that he's sort of pecking away.
Just bought, so he got it closed on today.
Yeah. So that's the property that?
Yeah, that's property.
Okay.
That's the property for what, for this?
Yes, you have the plans.
I can, yeah, I bring them in, you never let them, so I'm very, I'm in, now you want to go.
No. These two buildings are next to the residential properties.
Well.
Um, I think they are, what was it?
I think, because he's buying the residential properties, I think the only one he does have is in the very corner. There was like three properties, three or four?
One house, one house is down, and he's gonna buy the house and the, the other buildings are more like a garage, big garage.
Let's see. He's gonna get it.
Yeah. And he was house, garage, house, and he bought this house already.
Garage, house. Down.
Right, and I think he's picking up the garage, and he's got this last one to go.
He is, but isn't he putting the dispensary on the corner?
I'll wait for the plan, I don't know, I haven't seen any plans.
I don't think dispensary on the corner, I think the, the dispensary are these two things he's talking about.
No, that's not a dispensary, that's, this is just the grove, so.
Or construction. I'm looking at those agreements, I'm surprised that they posted them, because they're not supposed to do that until we look at them.
But this. This is true.
That one we just discussed, where's my notes, where are my notes?
Well, we're, we're meeting tomorrow night, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll discuss it tomorrow night.
Okay. And affordable housing trust, I have six and then six thirty.
Because the joint committee's meeting tomorrow night.
Joint meeting, that's a fast meeting?
Which?
Yeah.
The six, six, the six thirty.
Sixty-six, affordable housing, yeah, we'll be.
Oh, that's affordable housing?
Yeah. Yeah, but we're, that'll be okay. Yeah, we'll check it out, we don't need to go look at this.
Well, oh, man. Don't say that, she has a weapon there.
It's not a lock, it's okay.
It was nice to see these online, actually, also.
Oh, they were electronic?
Yeah. So I can take a look, a quick look, just to see if the numbers come out.
So the locus says.
It's just in layout materials, so try. Sheet number three. No, no, sheet, what, they don't number the cover sheet, so it's sheet number two.
It's something like.
Oh, yeah.
This is, this is the building that's there, that building's in the.
That's. That's proposed, and that's proposed, these two, that is not on, not, not the residential, because he hasn't owned this, this property yet.
So it's not a, it's going.
This is where the, uh, this is the house that got knocked down.
Yes.
So the buildings are here, which is separate from this corner lot.
I wonder if it'll absorb that corner lot, because he, he used to be the here, with this project, and then he sort of mixed them together.
But this may be what we talk about somewhere next.
Yep.
We'll see.
And what's that in the back there?
Pardon?
What's that?
Proposed sixty-five hundred square foot office, office, industrial.
Industrial? What's FFE?
What's that?
FFE?
Four ninety-six.
What is that?
For elevation.
Oh, elevation, okay.
Oh.
Because it's floating on the wetland there.
Okay.
Okay.
Office, there's the train, so the next project that he was talking about.
Yeah, it's back there.
Up there, yeah.
There is mud?
There is mud.
Okay, thank you, my word. So that is done, and then we have another public hearing. Scheduled also for the twenty-third, this is for, um.
At least a.
I brought that in.
At least a, and now, five hundred foot driveway.
Thank you.
Five hundred foot?
I'll look at it.
Yeah.
How do they do that?
The development of nine multifamily residential units on Shrine Avenue.
This is on the corner next to the other apartments, right behind checkerboard, I think.
Yeah.
There's an existing, what is the existing, uh?
Well, there's, there's checkerboard.
Checkboard.
So it's that dark, that big dark spot there.
Back and behind.
Oh, here. Oh, it's not off of Shrine, though.
Yeah, I don't know, Shrine.
Of our circle.
Oh, the access is off Shrine Circle there. Shrine comes around, so the access is here, this is all houses here, I think he owns one of those, but I thought, access dot.
He's waiting for the organ.
That's erosion control.
Shrine Avenue. Shrine, of course, I don't see the road.
Is that access driveway comes right in here?
Oh, off of Shrine, okay, that one.
So they're all up here.
And this is?
The wetland.
Existing building?
Those are the existing apartments at the corner of Shrine and outside, what's that, Ultimate Obstacles?
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that is?
Well, that's, if you go past Ultimate Obstacles, there's like a four-unit apartment building, and that's them.
Oh, and that's them, and he comes further around?
Keep coming, and he's gonna go up this driveway.
Is the property that the contractor calls sale?
This is, yeah.
They have, they have the property for sale.
Yes, I think he owns that too, but I'm not sure. It says a hundred eighty-seven percent. Because my own question was, where is the zoning law, and that's the.
That was earlier.
Right.
This is on single residence?
Yeah.
So it's business zone?
As long as he's not going into, right, as long as he's not into the single residence, so that's good.
Yep.
It looks like his property kind of stops there.
Yeah, it looks like that, that's what he's proposing for his site.
So this is for a, um.
Access. Site number three for nine minutes.
Nine minutes.
Yeah, so how much property is it, it's?
How much land?
Two acres?
Two acres, that doesn't sound right.
Ninety thousand square feet.
Ninety thousand square feet per two acres, I don't know what that means.
Two point zero seven, that's ninety thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's ninety thousand square feet.
So he's just, he's just squeezing the unit, because he can have, he has to have ten thousand per unit, and he built in nine, so that's ninety thousand, he's just squeezing it in.
That's.
Can we just not allow any more construction in town?
Why?
I don't know.
This is, these are apartments, aren't they?
No, I can't think of any.
Oh, really, what is the, uh, because he came in, was he there when he came in, he said he wanted to work with the, um.
No.
The housing production plan?
No.
Who was that?
That's the guy off of Holt Drive.
Yeah.
Mister, um, Smolik.
Oh, Chevalier.
Back of, uh, in the back of, uh.
No.
Yeah, it was fellow.
Yeah, it was like a Hunter Kettle.
It's the guy that's behind, Schmolenkis or something like that?
Oh, yeah, all right. Lankowski.
That was.
Yeah, that's.
Schmolenkis.
Cutler, okay.
Cutler, Curtis, one of those.
Okay, so, are we good for, are we good for that then?
So that sounds good.
Yep.
Have we distributed everything, do we need to let them know to send it to VHB?
I already know that, I'll tell them.
And they know, they have to post this, they have to do the paperwork?
Done that, yeah.
And you already have a copy?
I have it.
All right, we're almost there.
Okay, so, oh, the land use and zoning chapter.
That's quick, have you guys given me any comments on that yet?
Nope.
No, you're good to go.
So we'll continue that for the next meeting? I mean, I.
Well, did you send them out?
Yes.
You sent us something?
Yes.
When?
Like a week before the last meeting, when you didn't review it?
Oh, man.
You started to follow my trends here.
Always has to be, always has to be a little dig at that, you know what I mean?
You get used to it, it's all right.
I'm, I'm used to, I'm used.
Just ignore him, he doesn't go away though.
Oh.
You really, it's like, oh.
Yeah, Sumiola was really desperate to get that done.
She was looking for it.
She was looking for it. So, did you review it?
No.
If you don't have it handy, send me an email and I will resend it off.
No, I'm, I'm still looking for the, that list of zoning bylaw changes.
I may have it buried in my files, but.
I was trying to look at my list. I know.
Okay, uh, the other item we have is number one here for new business. Discuss process suggested by the marijuana subcommittee for application reviews.
Do you have?
Do we have anything about that officially? You sent us something out, right?
I did. I sent out, but I.
You did?
Don't have a list.
You didn't get it?
I don't remember seeing it.
Oh.
I've heard that before.
I might have only sent it to the bi- the marijuana.
Oh, oh, all right.
Do we need to review that?
I was gonna say, I, I look for stuff from Mark. It's like, makes my day, um.
Something with a special sound or color when you send you something?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. What's the miracle sound?
What the heck? I'm just trying to see if I can find the, the copy of that.
Because I guess I had a question. I wasn't sure what, who gets what when and how it all kind of talks.
That's what, that's what we wrote down.
Right, that's good. Cause it, if I looked at the zoning bylaws, the zoning bylaws that we just enacted talked about getting approval or something from the state and somebody else.
Yes, yes. But there's a, there's a, there's a flow chart that we discussed at our last meeting, and you sent out.
Flow chart, yeah.
Yeah. You sent that out in mail. Would be lucky to see a copy of that for this evening, or?
I, I'm not sure I'd be fast enough to figure out what was going on.
Right, so, we're meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night to kind of finalize that. But the concern that I have is we gotta make sure we're not putting something that has to occur before it doesn't.
That's exactly why we did the whole thing.
Yes, yes.
I mean, that's good.
Yeah.
Yes. And Anita was there, the whole committee was there, and it made perfect sense. I'm not, you're, sure if you're aware that we had a deadline for submitting applications for retail establishments, which was December seventh.
Oh, so it's already passed?
Yes.
So.
So they put together a whole process, the joint committee reviews, the selectmen review, and try to figure out.
Are there standards that they review it based on, or is there some kind of?
There's a document.
There's some.
Yeah, yeah. So.
But it's one of the list of things to talk about as well.
Is it public as to how many apply, or is it not public?
I don't think so.
I don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
We have had applications, so.
We did, okay. But I figured we must have had one at least.
Yes, several, something.
Yeah.
They did.
I mean, there, there's the two retail, the limit to two retails, but then there's unlimited for the rest of them.
Right.
Cause the thing that I'm looking at is I'm not sure what parking applies.
Well, oh, actually, we didn't cover one question that I.
Cause it's, is it called fast food? I mean, that's kind of what, a drive-through fast food has a certain requirement, and we know already that our parking standards are pretty light.
Of course, the, the question really comes up when you have a marijuana retail establishment at a plaza or a place where there's shared parking.
Right.
Well, even, not even just the parking, but the whole site plan review came up as what do we do?
Well.
Right, if they, if, let's say they wanna come into an existing business center that's got a permit for site plan review, they still have to come to the planning board, I assume, because I thought that's what it said in our bylaw.
It does, but what are they coming for?
Exactly, that's, that's what I was hoping to see, where.
Well, we haven't, we know when they have to come, which is after they've submitted, uh, to the board of selectmen and their application, and. There's a state acknowledgement of that they have an application, and after that, we can be involved.
We, the planning board.
Planning board. Let's see, there's the, uh, let's see, the first thing they do is the facility, the facility application to the, actually, I think that goes to Anita, through the board of selectmen. So they fill out that application. That's reviewed by the, by the committee and the board of select, uh, and the board of selectmen, then, then if approved, they can schedule their community outreach meeting, which is sort of the start to talk to whatever, the neighbors and everything like that, like he was talking about.
Right.
But we don't want them to do that until we've review, at least reviewed their application. We don't wanna let them just go talk and have these public forums.
So if there are more, if there are more applications than two, then how are they weeded out?
Well, or there can be more than two applications, and that's sort of the problem.
Yes.
Right.
The, the select, the selectmen and the subcommittee.
Yeah.
Narrow that down to two? Is that the way it goes?
No, there could be more. I think what they wanna do is weed out the, the, the frivolous. Like, if somebody's just not serious, it's, we're, we're talking about the, the companies that aren't local, that are in Colorado and you can't, you know, they're not even coming to town, they're just sending applications everywhere. You know, you wanna say, well, no.
How we vet them, I'm not sure.
Yeah, there was something in that document about.
Someone would pay attention to that.
Yeah.
So the pla- this, the planning board, uh, can't really entertain more than two?
Well, retails. Well, no, that's not true. We can entertain as many as.
We can?
Yeah.
But only two are allowed.
We can give them a permit under site plan review for what?
Well, we could permit them. We could completely permit them, but they can't, we can. We can say, yeah, all right, you can have your business there, but they can't, they won't get their license.
We can't permit three.
We can complete the site plan review, but they don't, they may not have a license.
But if they can't operate until they get their license.
So if they, if, if they get a site plan review approval from us, and then for some reason can't or don't complete the application process.
Or don't get licensed, I think we could say.
Or don't get licensed by the state or whatever, that's what I'm saying. For whatever, for whatever reason, they withdraw, or the state says no, or. Okay.
For whatever reason, then they just, they can't operate, but they have the approval to do it.
Right, and I think the point was that many people wouldn't go through that whole process unless they were serious.
Right.
Right, that's true. So, so there was, the cu- the community host agreement is sort of an agreement between them and the town that's required for the state to start doing their licensing. So then, the planning board, we don't wanna be involved until after that happens.
The only thing I was thinking about with that, is there a way to put, like I said, we have issues with our own parking numbers, is that the document where we say, we want you to provide however much parking per square foot? Like, instead of what our bylaws say for a regular retail establishment, which, like, for a bunch of the sites in town is not enough.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can we change that in the municipal agreement or whatever it's called there? Can we say that in that you have to design it for this, and as long as it meets the minimum for.
I'm, I'm not sure what level of detail the community host agreement gets to.
Take the post, the plaza at the post office.
Mm-hmm.
If we add up the parking required from each of the businesses at that plaza, is that the way you, and, and then there's not enough space, is that the way we figure it out, or is there some sort of other formula?
No, it's, whatever uses.
So AJ's Pizza needs N spaces, the post office needs N spaces, the pet food store needs N spaces, you add them all up.
Yep.
Add them all up, unless they.
Dry cleaners and all the others, yeah.
Unless it's inadequate, or whatever. If it's inadequate, there's a B, um, what do we call it, uh, they can get a permit to share spaces, like a nighttime restaurant, and the dentist's office can use, count their spaces together because they don't operate at the same time.
But that's only allowed through the site plan review, so if they.
I thought it was a, uh, zoning board of appeals approval.
No, I'm pretty sure that is within site plan review standard.
The sharing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for each of those businesses?
But, but the idea is there, and it would go either way. I think we could support it if that's the case.
Right.
So who would figure out all those numbers?
Well, the applicant first.
The building inspector. When, the building, it's zoning, so it's still in the zoning, so that would have to be. Actually, I think it's in the parking section, so it is separate from the site plan review, it's in the parking section, section five, two.
Because we had. Yeah, because we had El Forno there, and they had a lot of parking, they had a lot of customers, and they pretty much filled up that whole right-hand section, but then by that time, the post office was closed, and so.
The post office and the.
So there's probably some, a lot of sharing allowed.
Yeah.
But it has to be documented and shown that it's something.
So who documents that? The building inspector?
It would be. Well, when we did, we did a site plan review on that property.
Yeah.
And it was shown with, it was McDonald's at the time, so.
Right. Did they have a drive-through?
Yep, they did.
They did.
And it was a lot, it was all the way around, so it wasn't so bad.
They didn't derequaint it?
Yes. So, yeah, that's what we're.
I don't know, I don't know where that would come in.
What?
Talking about the parking.
Traffic parking.
Yeah, but site plan review was after community host agreement.
Well, I don't know if parking, I don't know if parking would be, parking might come up during the community outreach, uh.
Right. There's certain.
Might be, might be mentioned in the, in the host agreement, I don't know. Adequate parking, but I think.
Maybe we should make sure that.
But it's the planning board that needs to, needs to figure out in the site plan review whether parking is adequate or not.
Right, but it's just funny if they get all the way to us and they have it, and they've got free spaces, you know?
Yeah, there, there'd have to be a conversation of some sort before that, to show a comment.
So each business center, depending on how many businesses are in that business center, has to notify somehow how many spaces that they need?
No, it's by, it's used.
It's by, it's by zoning. It's by use.
So like, like, okay, where, we use where the Salter School is, okay? There's fourteen businesses in there, okay?
Right.
You have to add them up.
There's more, I mean, the biggest, the biggest part of that is the Salter School. I mean, and that's Monday through, Monday through Thursday.
Right.
And it's usually morning and at night.
That, that lot is never anywhere near, near even twenty percent full.
Oh.
Really?
It's half full in, in the morning for the gym.
I don't know where the last night is down there, but at night, when that, when they have classes at night, that whole section.
Is it really? And the gym feels up there, owner?
If they have these evening classes, you got the Planet Fitness, you got the.
Oh, okay, all right.
You got the Chinese restaurant, you got Planet Fitness, you got the Salter School, you got, and now Peterson School is in there, and they have night classes, you know, so.
Japanese restaurant.
Okay, I stand corrected.
No, 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 but.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, yeah.
But I mean, I know that you guys, you said, you know, they have to have so many per business, so that's why I was thinking, like, if there's fourteen businesses, and each business has a minimum of what Vinnie says, fifteen parking spots.
Right.
Just depends what it is.
Then you multiply that by fifteen, but they probably have more than that.
Yeah. The Salter's, the school would be rated for more than that, you know? It's by, it's by what type of business and the square footage.
Yeah, like if it's a restaurant, it's number of tables times whatever number of spaces per table.
Because like, right, like now the doll, the doll store, okay, over.
Which one?
The Ollies.
Yeah.
They might, they might have an issue, because they open till, what, seven o'clock at night?
But they're the only business on that side.
Now, when the movie theater is on at night, you can't find parking spot over there.
On that whole side?
Yes, that whole side over there.
And these, our parking is, I mean, when you talked about zoning things, parking should be looked at in our zoning bylaws, cause it hasn't been done in twenty-five years.
Back when, when people didn't pay horses.
Well, we took Worcester's from twenty-five years ago, and Worcester has changed theirs multiple times since then, which you have not.
We have a, we have a record of Higgin posts.
Right next to the Vopitas.
Yeah.
So, what we've been counting on is when a new business wants to move in, the building inspector is the zoning enforcement person, so he's kind of supposed to be checking on things, which is, ties into our next item, which is the zoning violations. Which is where the Ollies and Girardos came in. That was permitted by site plan review for a certain number of spaces for office.
Right.
And I don't think it was permitted for a restaurant, or for some of the other things that are, um, being operated there. So, that's why they have more, need more spaces than what was originally approved. So it's, it's gotta be reviewed by the.
So why don't we jump ahead to that item then?
Sounds good.
These are my notes from the last chairs meeting, and Anita sent out an updated version of this, I believe, which I haven't, which I have not looked at.
Updated since this one that I sent?
Updated since the meeting.
Oh, that.
Yeah, updated since the chairs meeting, which was a few weeks ago.
All right.
And Chris Hutter was getting very excited, cause Anita dropped some of these off. Cause that's, that's Chris's goal.
Are they all set?
Is to remove, remove these things.
Well, the red ones.
Right.
On your list, yeah.
Right. So, if I can recall my notes from this meeting, um, let's, wanna go with these one by one?
You're the chair, go to it.
Let's go. It's your list, though. No, it's not your list. We call it Vinnie's list, but it's not really Vinnie's list. Um, yeah, and these red ones were available to be taken off, right?
Yep, they're.
If they're red all the way to the right.
Pretty much in compliance.
Yeah.
They're not all complete, but they're in compliance.
So, I forget which one she was taking off, but, uh, Prozone Salter School, uh, no further action? We're not, we're not waiting for anything, or we're not, uh?
We were waiting for a letter, but, yeah.
Which never came, so.
So go ahead and go.
Yeah, okay, so we're done with that, no further action?
I think so.
Okay. Uh, and the same here, um, Carmelwood Farms?
Yep, they're all certificate of completion, they're done.
Okay. Um, I need to send a letter to Nancy for this. Um, more details, I knew, under more details on this one.
Ninety-nine Hartwell.
Ninety-nine Hartwell.
That's the one where they had a, they did a site plan review, they got, uh, completion, I think, uh, certificate of completion required.
Well, there's other buildings.
And then he, no, this is Diverty's. This is Diverty at ninety-nine.
Oh, Diverty, that's the FedEx.
So this is the one where he did the UPS, or FedEx, one of those. Yeah, so they did the area in the back, and then he changed over the whole front to have, instead of a walk-in, he's got garage doors, and he changed the parking and the layout of the drainage in the front, and then he never came back to the planning board, and he altered more than fifteen spaces.
It's the spaces that is the.
Trigger.
Trick.
Fifteen parking spaces.
Is that the most important thing here, is the spaces? Or is the changes?
Well, it's the trigger. The issue was that he did all this work, even though he, he could have probably saved a lot of effort, cause he already had a site plan review, all he had to do was amend it, and note the changes that he was doing on the front of the building.
Yeah.
But he just went ahead and did everything, even though he had, he had drainage problems.
So what are we, so what are we, what are we looking for then?
Site plan review.
A full site plan review?
Yeah, cause he, he had trouble with drainage with the neighbor, and so we had to confirm that everything was okay, but he has since that time, I thought, changed the contours and the parking and the pavement in the front of the building, which is where the drainage.
Certainly new pavement. I don't know if it's changed, but it's new code.
Yeah, well, yeah, he's altered it, I don't know. Right, we haven't seen it planned, so we don't know for sure.
Okay. Uh, Full Storage Baseball, yeah.
That one's almost done. He said he might be changing things, so he hasn't completed the site plan review.
Right, so there's no, there's no action.
There's no issues.
No issues. Um, I sent the Linnair, Holy Cross. Attached letter from Bush. This is a Franklin, this is a liquor store. Wachusett Liquors. That's the actual name.
Twenty-one Franklin Street, yeah, they're fine.
Yeah. Attacked, okay.
We sent out a certificate of completion recommendation, so that one's done. We, we asked them to plant a couple trees, and they planted them last fall, and if they didn't get enough water this year, they're.
Yeah. Why did I write down attached letter from Bush Jackson?
Bush Jackson?
It doesn't make any sense, okay. Uh.
Is there drainage coming off their property going out into Franklin Street? That was one of the concerns when we did the.
Was it?
Original design was, they calculated the drainage, and they're always, from that site, there always was some flow going out into Franklin Street, and so when they designed the basin, the basin has a spillway that goes right to Franklin Street, and they said that, which is matching.
Yeah, but it never hits it.
Well, in the five inch rainstorm we got in August, it might have.
Nah, it went by.
Did you?
Cause I was looking, I was, I mean, I was going someplace, and I, I was like, I wouldn't, I looked in it, cause you could see water in them, but not, I mean, down in the bottom. It wasn't nearly.
Well, it, it doesn't last long. It would have only been for like two hours that it was overtopping and going into the road.
Okay.
But.
But the neigh, the, actually, the neighbor's driveway is much, it drains right out. I mean, you can see like a river coming out of their driveway.
And that's what they were comparing, this Franklin Street, uh, you know, the basin, the liquor stores.
Okay. Um, Big Daddy condos, the fence. Send letter about fence.
Well, I thought there was a couple of things. There's a fence, there's the walls, there's the.
What walls?
Yeah, um, he put walls down at plan, it doesn't show the access coming off of Route twelve.
Yeah.
I don't think there are walls showing on that. It's supposed to grade off, uh, into the backyards.
There's walls on the edge of the. There's walls on the edge of the.
On Route twelve, going into the driveway, in that corner there, there's retaining walls.
There are retaining walls because of the.
Pretty sure.
Okay.
But, I, I think I noticed it, and then the question of the access going down, the last time I.
It's, it's okay, it's striped, and it's a speed bump with stripes on it.
Is it a real speed bump, or is it like this twelve foot, twelve inch high?
No, no.
Can you really drive over it?
Spikes.
We're not sure.
It's the spikes like at the car rental places.
We're not even sure if we have permission to do it.
Well.
Permission to do what?
To drive over it.
I don't know if I'd wanna drive over it, I drove up this way.
There's no, there's no, uh, equipment there anymore, right?
Yeah, there is.
Oh, there is?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, um, like a.
Skid steer.
Right next, right next.
Well, my presentation to the chairs committee was that the, that was, that was under agreement, and they were taking care of that, but the fence.
Yeah, as long as they're happy with it, I, I wouldn't drive over it, but it just seems like if.
The fence is crooked.
It's crooked?
Oh, the fence along Route twelve?
Yeah, it's, it's, and it goes, it's not, it's not straight.
Well.
Who do we?
Well, I don't.
It has like a little dip in it.
Yeah, I don't know that we can worry about that, but I just think the fence is.
It's too close to the roads.
Fence is in the road, it's not on the property, so they can either move the fence or get an easement from Mass Highway.
Who'd we send a letter to about the fence, who would be the most, uh, VHB?
No, um, VHB noted it.
The building inspector?
Building inspector, we should CC the building, we should send it to Clyde there, what's his name?
Craig.
Craig. Craig Womboldt. And just note the fence, the, um, and the concerns from Mass DOT. But ours was mostly.
Was Mass DOT involved officially?
Um, we got an email from Cheryl saying Mass DOT concerns are not, have not been addressed yet, and I haven't seen what their concerns were, I was expecting to get something.
They had. Okay.
Was that the reason?
Yeah.
Didn't he have to get permission from Mass, uh, Mass DOT?
Yeah, we sent him off, he needed permission.
With that fence?
No, well, he should have, but I'm not sure he did, and that's, we haven't seen anything to show that he did.
I thought somebody said that he, he did, the fence is where it's supposed to be.
Well, then if that's.
I don't know, I'm just saying.
That's fine, I mean, if it is, then.
So, we're concerned that the fence is not the, where it's supposed to be.
Right.
Okay, so I'll just say that, we're concerned, please provide evidence that it's where it's supposed to be.
And then for safe vehicle travel, the speed bump thing, just make sure it's, it's a speed bump, it's not supposed to be a barrier to traffic.
You wanna, your concern is that it's too high?
It's too, yeah, it's too large, too steep.
Okay, were you trying to go through it like eighty, or?
No, I stopped, I was, so it wasn't going that fast.
Okay, so point, point eight.
So you need to start over?
I didn't see, I, it just looked like, it looked like a curb, like a real curb.
I, I've only seen it from one ten, so, I haven't actually gone up there and driven it.
Yeah.
Oh, I suppose Finders Pub is probably sort of moot at the moment.
Okay.
Finders, since they're closed.
Uh, Finders is closed, the other one's closed.
Yeah, both.
Finders is closed, Finders is closed.
Finders closed now?
Yeah.
That's what I heard, yeah.
That's what I.
It was there like two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago.
Well, it's your fault then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should have tipped more.
Yeah.
And one, one forty-one Sterling Street, that one's all done, isn't it?
Yeah.
The police station now is also.
Yeah, yeah, it's done. Uh, Kevin's Automotive, send Nancy a note to explain. The deal was they're parking, people are parking along the, the road, whatever it's called.
In the road, in the, in the.
Alcatraz Street, or whatever it's called.
Alcatraz Street.
What is it called?
Alcatraz.
Alcatraz, yeah.
Yeah, it's close.
Alcatraz.
Right, well, it's that idea, and it's, they've got a whole bunch of cars, just, it looks like.
I don't think they're doing as bad as they used to.
Yeah, well, I haven't really noticed, I mean, I just know that it's, they've got way more than fifteen parked cars.
Way back, yeah.
And they don't have a site plan review. Site plan review law came into effect in nineteen ninety-two.
Uh-huh.
And. It hasn't got a site plan review since that's been put through, he got a permit from the selectmen, but they said they have a site plan, but it didn't have to go through site plan review, so he's, so it's similar to, it's a, doesn't comply with the zoning requirements for site plan review.
So what's our action on this one?
Um, that's where we ask the building inspector for, he's a zoning enforcement officer, what is his interpretation of the rule? We have no record of a site plan review, and he's got a situation which would normally warrant site plan review. But it was, it has occurred, I think he's been doing this for ten years.
So that we, we would like the building inspector to.
It's always been like that.
Well, it hasn't been as much, when Edelberry owned it, it was only a few cars, and he hadn't filled in the back there, but the area in the back has been filled.
Oh, okay.
So we'd like the building inspector to see if there's a zoning violation down there.
That's the whole point of all these, is the, all these questions of what's in the building inspector actions, we have no idea, we've never heard from them.
Yes, right. Yeah. Right. Yep. Uh, Curtis Industries?
Done.
Done, yep.
Yeah, that one's.
Or as you said, Clayton, or Curt, or Curtain, or whatever you said.
Cutler.
Cutler, um, the radio tower.
The police fire radio tower, they never finished their site plan review, they never came in for certificate of completion,
Yeah.
and part of that, I think it said, was to fix the drainage at the bottom of the hill on Beaman Street, and that's, had not been done. I'm not sure if it's done now, do you remember that, Mike?
It's not the drainage part, I remember.
I thought they came in for the site plan review, I thought the only thing, because it was not much site, they said the only thing we want you to do is fix the drainage so it doesn't drain out in the street. That was the only site work that was needed.
So we never approved the site plan?
No, the site plan's been approved, everything is okay, we haven't gotten a, a request for a certificate of completion.
Oh, so there's no.
Or to close it up, and I think we have money in the, in our accounts, so.
Yeah, no certificate of completion, so that's the building inspector, like, what happened there?
Yeah, that's the running question, yes.
What are we looking for from, uh, two thirty-five West Boylston, where Fretzel's was?
Fretzel's? Oh, that's another, it looks like they got a whole lot, a couple of buil, businesses.
Yeah.
They're, they're storing some landscape company vehicles in the back. There's, that was always just like a florist for a while, with parking in the front, and it's expanded where it needs site plan review. It's triggered the fifteen parking spaces, but nothing's ever been done with it. If you look at the site, there's more than, there's no site plan review on record.
So. What do we need?
Site plan review, or determination from the building inspector saying there's no need for a site plan review. But again, we wanna get a response.
Yep. Um. Ninety-four North Main Street.
Ninety-four North Main Street, that was the.
He's, uh, that's the house.
That's multifamily and a single residence.
Mr. Ali's office has moved to ninety-two.
Yeah, that's two separate ones, I think you have.
Yes, that's true, but his.
So that's the multifamily residence in a single residence district.
Right, but the, right, well, and somebody was also concerned about, oh, I see, that's this one here.
And the sign is on ninety-two, right?
Right.
I guess already been taken care of.
What has?
The sign, and the thing about the house, it's been, it's been a multifamily house for years and years and years, before it was even, before it was even, uh, there's only.
Uh, all you, we asked the building inspector, and all we need is some documentation that that's the case, I don't remember it being that way. The neighbors, the neighbors say that that's not the case.
I thought that he sent that to you guys, did he go and ask the inspector?
He has not, he had, he sent something to us that said, the assessors say that it's three, it's three apartments. So the assessors have it, but that means nothing to zoning, I mean, if the zoning says it's single residence, just because someone has three apartments in there doesn't mean it's.
But on the assessor's card, it says single, it's a single residency, but it also shows multi, it says multifamily.
Assessor information is strictly for guidance to establish value and tax levies, it has nothing to do with legal, uh, legal standing.
So what do we ask the building inspector to do?
Um, if he has any documentation that shows that it's a compliant lot, it's a single residence district, and there's multifamily there. And we got complaints from the neighbors saying, well, what's going on, it's, hasn't been there for ten or fifteen years, it's only been there since this whole, well, twelve years, I guess it's been since the whole, uh, affordable housing thing.
Fourteen years.
So.
Okay.
And if he says that, if after fourteen years they're exempt, let's see the law.
Which thing, which one is it?
Ninety-four North Main.
The big white house, next to the drive, next to the.
Oh, the house.
Yeah, I was thinking that they had to add, because they broke that out of their property, it's like its own lot, they should put a, they should put a, whatever, an access to that drainage that's all in the front. So, because that drainage is for the.
It's for ninety-two, yeah.
You know?
There is, there is a, um, what you wanna call it, in front of the house.
That's what I mean.
Then it drains into that drain that's right there on the, on the roadway, drains into that.
Oh, does it? No, well.
And there's, and there's a.
There's a drainage, drainage pond in front of it, and on the ninety-four property, yeah.
Yeah, right. Right, and then there's a stockade fence that runs all along.
Yeah, the driveway.
And there's two entrances, or two gates, one that goes into the house, and then one that goes into the backyard. That was a requirement that we made him do.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep, okay.
It's a, okay, I know.
And the sign, as far as, as far as I know, the sign has been taken care of, we've asked people, you know, nobody has, nobody has complained to us, and when Mr. Ali came, you know, we talked to him about it, and they went out there, he was supposed to have somebody go out and look at it, but when you come down the hill, it's not, I, I've gone down there like at ten, eleven o'clock at night, and I don't think it's that bright, you know, but it's just me, you know? And I've asked, I've even asked the police department if they've had any complaints from any of the residents, they said no.
We got pictures of it, someone sent us photos.
I complained, yeah. I, I'm just telling you, like you said, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we got complaints, that's all I know.
What's happening is people are complaining to the wrong people, it is, it's, they gotta complain about that thing, because it's a forty B project, and it's a ZBA project, they should be complaining to us, nobody has complained to us.
Okay.
And like I said, I've talked, I asked for the police department if they've had any complaints about, you know, people talking about that sign, about the brightness, and they said no, so.
Okay, alright. Um. Girardos. Fellow from.
The parking on the north side.
Who's the conservation commission guy?
Bill Chase.
He said again, tell Vinnie there's no violation there.
No violation of what?
Your parking spa, your fifteen, fifteen parking space, he said, he said each of those sections is fourteen parking spaces.
Yeah, and then how many people don't park in the parking spaces, it's not just because you put fourteen lines out there, that's a parking lot for fourteen lines, and you make it big enough for thirty, forty.
The lines go all the way, is it, don't, don't they?
No, because there's more than fourteen spaces there, or fourteen cars parking, just drive by any day and count the number of cars.
Which, the back side or the deep side?
The, the new one, the new, between Girardos.
Between Girardos and, um, West Boys and Seafood, count the number of cars in there, that's one lot. If there's fourteen for West Boys and Seafood, and one on Girardos, that's fifteen, it needs site plan review. They came in, I've got the plan, I take it every month.
What?
He was emphatic.
Yeah, but isn't that, that was a paper street, okay?
Yep.
West Boys and Seafood and Girardos own.
No, it's a paper street.
They used it.
Right.
They split the, they split it down the middle, one side is, is West Boys and Seafood, the other side is Girardos.
Excellent, so, on what, on that property, how many lots, or how many parking spaces does West Boys and Seafood have?
Fourteen, I don't know how many West Boys and Seafood has, but that's their, that's their.
It's not, it's still one parcel, and it has fifteen parking sp, more than fifteen parking spaces.
Even though they divided it?
They didn't, did, did we sign an A and R, did you guys sign an A and R?
I don't know for that.
We didn't sign anything.
They came in, I think, with a proposal, and said they were gonna.
Said they were gonna come back with a site plan review, and they never did. So it's, it's never been divided into two, so that if that's what they're saying, is fourteen and fourteen, then show me that the lot's been divided.
Then if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that, just to get this, then you need to go after the people on the other side where, of those buildings, those apartments in the back, that's a paper street. They never got that approved, that was never supposed to be approved, that street is all West Boys and, but the building and the apartments are in Worcester.
Yes.
And that was a paper street, nobody ever came in, it was subdivided, the guy just automatically built it, and I, reason I know that is because my wife and I were looking at those when they first built them, and the guy said, oh, yeah, and he says, this was a paper, this was a, a private street at one time, and, you know,
Magnolia.
the parking lot in the street is in West Boys and, but the apartment's in Worcester, because you'd have a Worcester, um, post office.
Yeah.
I'm like, that makes no sense, but then, then as I got even more involved in it, then I found out that, you know, because all along there at one time, those were, there was a lot of paper streets, and town council had given a big lecture about that when we were open Hartwell Street, about all these paper streets, and, you know, they were, assessors were trying to find out, you know, who were the original owners, they just kind of abandoned, it was supposed to be a big project, it got abandoned, and it just left all these streets, and so now these businesses came in, and then, you know, they were sharing this, and so now some people just took that, you know, that street, and they divided it in half, you got this site, you got that site, so, West Boys and Seafood, I would imagine, is probably paying taxes on one half of it, and Girardos is paying taxes on the other.
We would hope.
Check your site, I'll bet you dollars to donuts that it's one property on the assessor map. I don't, I've never seen it divided.
Who do you think owns it?
I've never seen more than fourteen vehicles there.
It's an unknown ownership, and no one has gone through the naming process to establish ownership, they just built on it. Because that was what we said to the people that came in.
Who would request an A and R then, if the person who owns it is not identified?
It should go to tax title, and then for lack of payment of taxes, it would get paid off, and that's what, this has been going on for fifteen years, because that's what came up on Magnolia, the street where the apartments are.
Right.
I said, I asked the assessors to go through that process, to, to go through the tax title, they said it's too expensive, we don't get our money back. I said, will you tell me how much it's gonna cost, and that one that's the access for those apartments, I will bid that amount that you guys need to make your money back, to buy it, and then I'll close it off if they don't, if they don't wanna pay me, and I'll pay the town, I don't.
Throw it up there?
No, I just.
They, they still throw paper streets.
Right, so it's still not owned, so it's a paper street, and they did this parking on someone else's property.
It's drawn, it's not owned.
But isn't a paper street, if there's two businesses that share a paper street, they still have to come in and do an A and R to divide it, I thought that, you know, they.
Well, I think. They have to do si, site plan review if they're gonna develop for fifteen or more parking spaces, and how many pa, spaces did you tell me that are out there?
Fourteen.
Twenty-eight on each side, fourteen on each side is twenty-eight.
Even though these, even though these businesses.
Fourteen on the West Boys and Sea. It's one parcel.
Paid for their own, paid for their own.
Has.
Wow, that's, okay.
It's.
No, I am, I am.
I mean, it makes perfect sense if you think about it, there's a lot there that got developed, what'd they do with drainage? What'd they do for access?
And before the, uh, before the con, uh, before the conservation commission, and they went to DCR, and everything got approved.
Conservation. Conservation. Conservation has approved.
So, hopefully that should be easy, they just come to us and show us all that documentation, but I'm not sure that that's what really happened, because when I've dr, driven past there, I've had to wait for a truck to back out of those areas, every morning.
On Route twelve.
And that's not the way the planning board works, it's safety, there shouldn't be any backing out into traffic, I mean, that's the whole idea behind site plan review.
Why is somebody, why is somebody backing out of there?
They get their deliveries every day.
Because they deliver and knows in, and then they back out onto Route twelve, or, it's not a safe situation, but it's a state highway.
Wait a minute.
Twenty oh five, there's a truck in there every morning.
I don't know.
Why do they, with all the road access there, why do they have to back out onto the street?
There is no.
Oh, I actually don't know if they, I don't know if they're backing out.
For, for which business?
In the back of Gerardo's. Because they pull into the area, because he gets his deliveries there, originally on our approved site plan, his deliveries were coming in at the very end of the building.
Yeah.
But now he has storage containers there.
You can drop around there though, I don't know.
You can drive out and around, but I don't know how you can make a delivery there, but he might be able to, I'm not, I'm not really.
Well, he gets the, the, all these one, the delivery is down the other end on the backside of the building, that's where the truck is every morning.
Site plan, did he do site plan review for access and safety?
I believe the road there was non-existent.
Alright, so what are we gonna do about this?
They go to the building inspector again, same as always, they have done work without site plan review. If the building inspector says everything's fine and it's safe, then the planning board is off the hook for any liability. That's what I'm looking at, is that when we get accidents and issues, who's liable? But then we ask all the good people, the people proposing new stuff, that they have to do all the stuff like RJF.
Yes, yep, okay. Thank you.
Alright.
Wait, are we done with that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was long enough.
Correct. Reports from other boards.
Nothing?
Affordable Housing Trust. We're, we're still moving ahead on Glacial Village.
Glacial Village?
Well, just because.
They're gonna have to come before the planning board, or is it decided that they can do?
They're gonna have no parking. We, actually, we, we consi-, we got the legal guy.
Yeah.
And he's got us doing other, uh, talking to other contra-, uh, consultants about feasibility and other things like that, so zoning was sort of, we, we should make sure we can do a project before we get that deep into how to get the program.
Well, no, I was just thinking whether they needed an A and R or a.
Oh, yeah, no, not yet. Or nothing determined yet.
Yeah, no, figuring out whether it's doable or not is more important.
Well, yeah, to getting the details ironed out of exactly how you're gonna break up the property, when you can't actually feasibly build the project is quite insubstantial.
Yeah, rock and hard place.
Right.
Transportation, Kelly Square is sucking up all available money. And so the plans to have a public forum about the center of town, it's sort of been put on hold. My suggestion is, I mean, even though people are in despair about not getting any money for things, it's like, we gotta start with something. And people said, well, you don't wanna have a public forum, and then nothing happens for a while, I said, well, nothing's gonna happen for five years anyway, so, you know, you gotta start with something, but I'll, I'll keep on pushing that, but the opinion of the transportation committee is that the traffic light in the center of town is not, that intersection is not really a problem.
Not a problem, even though people coming north on Route one forty when they're back behind the railroad track stop in the evenings?
Is that happening now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now?
Maybe a month ago I was there, but.
And what's even worse than that is trying to come off, if you're on Maple Street, and you're trying to come on to Worcester Street, if, between four and six o'clock in the afternoon, but get, we waited ten minutes the other day, my wife and I, because of the traffic, it just keep on going, and nobody's letting anybody by.
This is why I suggest we still have the forum, the, due to the lack of money, we felt that maybe a Franklin Street traffic light would be a, a good thing to actually accomplish and get, and start pushing that through, but.
I would really prefer that we hire someone or have someone that is a traffic person go through and analyze it instead of, I mean, a traffic light is a hundred thousand dollars.
No, a traffic light's a million dollars.
I don't want your traffic lights.
Do ya, yeah, I'll sell one for it.
Didn't Cumberland Farms do a traffic study when they were talking about building?
Well, I don't think they had done it yet.
Yeah.
I thought they, I thought they did.
No, they did, they did a preliminary thing, and they said it's five car backup.
Yeah, but they were talk-, I remember that when they talked about something, they were saying like, this is the traffic, and everybody's like, that's not the traffic. Doesn't, that light gets backed up for a long ways, and they said, oh, there's five cars.
Five car backup, is what.
At the light.
Yeah.
There's only ever gonna be five cars, and then everybody's like, you gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, exactly, so they're, because they did the te-, they did the counts on July fourth weekend.
Yeah, or something like that.
And then they extrapolated, and it's like, you can't do that, but that's where we had, but we have traffic data from, um, CMRPC, and they said they were gonna do something, but I guess they can't because they don't have time and everybody's left. And we got a proposal for six thousand dollars from a nasty consultant that does that traffic work, VHB. They were, I mean, they were working for us, I'm like, well, how much would it be to do a traffic study?
Yeah.
For this, and he took it back, this was eight years ago when I first asked about it on the transportation committee, and he's like, well, it's probably around six thousand, I think it was six thousand, maybe eight thousand, but.
What would the study include?
The triangle, to look at, are the options.
What data would we get, would we get traffic counts?
No, no, he would look at whatever available data there is.
Okay.
From CMRPC, which we have, but we need someone who can look at it, because at that time we were talking, we were actually permitting this building here for the, what was it?
The, uh.
Physical therapy place?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And that, we designed the tra-, uh, parking here with that being a one-way street going towards Route one forty. That was the initial intent, Franklin Street was gonna be one-way all the way to Route one forty, from Route twelve.
Wasn't it like that for a little while, and then that was?
It was not, no, it never got put through, because.
It was not.
It never got enacted or implemented.
And that's before they built the, the, uh.
Franklin Street housing, right, but it doesn't really matter too much, you just go around.
Because now that would be, to make Franklin Street a one-way street.
Why, say he's on traffic.
Yeah, but it would be inconvenient for them.
It would be inconvenient.
Totally inconvenient for them, and it'd be inconvenient for the town hall too.
Right now, we have a situation where Franklin Street is our number one traffic accidents. And it matters what matters most, and that's what we have to figure out, that's what a study is about.
Right, and that Franklin Street exceeded the danger line for mass DOT.
Right.
Where the center of town did not, as far as safety goes.
Right.
Why can't mass DOT do that? I mean, it's their, it's their.
Mass DOT, if we come up with a.
We have to pay, we have to, we have to pay for a certain amount of, a certain level of engineering.
Is there, is there any grants for that?
Don't know.
Not really, no.
They want you, they want the town to be on the hook for something, like to get started.
And then when we get, if we get the design, construction, the contract designed, they will pay for the construction, or.
We have to do all the legwork.
We do the front-end work, and then once it's all put together, they will fund, and that's what, that's how they did all the DCR projects that are going on down Route one forty and all that.
Transportation, can't the transportation committee, you guys can't apply for, um, any kind of grants or anything? To do a traffic study, I mean, I, I'm just asking, I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, we were talking about taking it out of the chapter ninety money eight years ago, like I said, when we started doing this, but then things, personalities changed, and so it never really got through, but I'll try to dig up what I have for the cost estimate, and then forward it over to you, Larry has it, I'm sure.
For, for a while, we're gung ho to get the pub-, you know, the public forums and all this stuff until the Pawtucket Red Sox are moving to Worcester, and that has taken a lot of, uh, everybody's money and attention.
And that's gonna be three years, till twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Right.
While they're involved. They've already started down there.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's the situation we're in, I would still like to hold the public forums and get feedback like this, I don't come through here at rush hour, so I don't know how, how far that backs up, but again, the question is, what in the world are you gonna do about it? What in the world are you gonna do about the traffic that comes, that comes through there?
You can do it just like they used to do in the olden days, you put a cop-out bid into direct traffic.
Oh, no, yeah.
I'm just saying, I mean, that, that's, you know, that's, that's how things used to be done in the olden days.
Traffic light is very, very responsive, and so if you took time away from the other side, for the other, the other cycles, you could probably do it, but in general, that light is very responsive to traffic. Now, if it's backing up too far on one forty, back to the railroad tracks, then that cycle needs to be longer, but there's only one lane going that way.
When I grew up in Boston, that's how it was, and we never had as much traffic as.
Yeah, they don't have traffic officers.
Cars were just, they were always there, they were just, you know, always at the peak times.
Who's re-, mass DOT is responsible for the cycles on that light, right? They programmed, they, they programmed.
We just got a study, did I send, did I send that out to everyone, no, we got it from Anita. The, uh, Route one forty study.
Corridor study, yeah.
Did we make any comments to them about what our issues were, I thought it was in there a little bit, but.
We needed to.
I was hoping the transportation committee was gonna jump on that.
We are gonna make comments about the corridor study, I haven't looked at it. But yeah, changing that cycle, people, people have suggested encouraging people to use one forty rather than going straight onto Central Street, sort of relieve the traffic there.
Well, we also have some of the issues where, um, I don't know what the process might be now, but if we looked at, they've talked about changing Hartwell Street, making Hartwell Street go all the way down to the reservoir again.
Oh, that's a huge project, you couldn't, you couldn't.
But that would be a, again, that would be a tip project, but that's in the list.
But that, yes, that would involve a major reconstruction of, of one forty, because the Hartwell, if you look at the hill, you'd never get a road up that hill with trucks.
I hear it.
If you want that road to service trucks, you'd have to dig out a huge roadway, do a lot of digging to get, to get trucks up that grade, because it's pretty steep there.
Yes. I hear it.
Yeah, so.
But that would cut out a lot of the truck that comes up and wants to go down to the center of town.
Yes.
And northern Worcester.
Yeah, that's true, yes, that's true.
And, because Pierce Street might work also, but that's right by the name, solar fields and up that way.
They closed that street off, uh, at the, um, at the railroad crossing, right?
Oh, yeah, both of them are closed.
Right.
But Pierce is more residential, ain't it?
Yes, that's the problem.
That's the problem.
Isn't the other side of Pierce, that's a get-in, right?
No, Pierce goes all the way down to Worcester, Worcester Street, and then kind of across through woodland and up to CVS.
We were at Butts, we were at Butts, the, um, um, the housing authority, where they're trying to get that land, the.
Cemetery land?
For the cemetery, isn't that, isn't that, isn't that?
That did ends at the railroad, or before the railroad tracks, but that's what I'm talking about.
I think it turns into a dirt, dirt path through to the power lines and stuff like that.
Dirt path down to the railroad, yeah, it's, yeah, I walked it a couple of years ago.
Really, it's a road, but it's not really.
No, I think it's gated.
No, I think it is gated, but I think there's a road.
Oh, the grade is still there, it's an old roadway, yes. Yeah, and an old burned-out car off to the side of.
Oh, awesome.
Years ago anyway.
Really, still there?
That's where my car is.
Okay.
Alright.
I found Chris Olson's letter asking for up, uh, zoning updates. Like, I can only find the draft, I can't find the letter that he sent out, so I'll send that out to everybody.
Does it have the list?
Yeah.
It has ten items on it.
Well, we can work on that, minutes, keep this moving? Get it moving?
Daily construction reports, anybody wanna look at those? PHP, alright, meeting minutes, we have.
The town reports.
Oh, the town reports.
I gotta drop that.
Yes, no, but still, there's a, oh, what's her name, from Bowditch and Dewey?
Oh, yes, the extension on subdivision. Is that on our agenda, is that for the next meeting, isn't it the next meeting?
This thing?
No, it's under, just the first ones that came in, so to be noted, but it's not, it's going, not gonna be on till the, till the, um, it will be on January ninth agenda, but just so you know.
I sent an email asking to go to town council, did you send anything to town council saying? Asking for town council to, um, give us feedback, because right now, we originally approved it when, nineteen ninety?
Extension, and we told them no.
We've told them no, this is the last one, twice or three times, and I'm at the point now where I wanna know from town council, what, what can we do to have the road just built? Because there's supposedly a bond or some kind of surety on it, how can we get it built? Or what are the ramifications of us saying it's gone, we're not gonna extend it anymore, it expires? And then is she able to develop that lot that's there, that's forty acre or fourteen acres, whatever it is, up on the corner? Because there's one more lot available for the last twenty-five, thirty years, it's been trying to be sold. So I wanted, I sent an email asking, and there were some questions in it saying, this is what we should probably ask the town council.
I'll send that to Anita.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
That might be the email I just sent out, Chris's letter.
I'll let you know.
Okay, good, because it's, I don't know the law that.
For seventeen, for, for twelve of seventeen.
What?
Well, that's, he's on the zoning bylaw stuff from Chris.
Oh, 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 okay. Alright, I'll let you know about that.
So that was the Bowditch and Dewey, was that the only one, or was it something?
Yeah, no, it was, it was just Sam, when the, when the report, the annual report was due, I think it's March.
March first. It'll be tough to match the quality of last year's report, Benny, but.
Maybe some more careful.
It's, it will be tough. Maybe we'll have that same standard following.
Um, we have invoices here.
Wow, lots of them.
I found my phone, it even lights up, so I can sign.
Oh, nice.
Alright, do we have minutes?
I need that for my keychain.
You have cats?
Set my car off again.
Oh, love those, they love them.
Some lasers?
Our dog loves lasers.
Really?
Yeah, I know, you can, like, you, you, you just go across the yard, the dog will run faster than it ever thought it could run.
Right, and then never learns that there's nothing there, yeah, uh, this is a bill for three hundred dollars, twenty-seven Hartwell. Uh, seventeen dollars and forty-four cents for Holy Cross.
What?
Seventeen dollars and forty-four cents. This one is for New House Circle, one fifteen, hundred and fifteen dollars, not a dollar and fifteen cents.
This is printing and postage, okay.
Four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Reimburseables, uh, one twenty-seven Hartwell Street.
I'll send these down for.
And this is, uh, postage.
Okay, oh, I keep saying I gotta go buy.
Oh, this is when they came for a meeting?
What?
Could be.
Wade in, Brehama.
Oh, yeah.
Please. Oh, this is to Melanie, no, I'm not finding it.
Well, I guess I'll be, I'll be a lot of stuff from home then, won't I?
You know, if you just drop it off at that.
All the letters that I sent out, I'll drop windy doorstep, and you can mail them off.
Those back in the green.
Post is going up in January another nickel, so.
Quick, buy all the, uh, universal stamps.
I did, I did provide them to.
I never, I never know how much stamps cost these days, because they never say on them anymore, they're all forever, they're all forever stamps.
Forever stamps all the time, forever.
Yeah, forever, uh, we have meeting minutes from the November fourteenth regular meeting. I will entertain motions about accepting these minutes as.
Was I there?
Or as amended, if we have any changes.
Yeah, yeah, you were there.
Yeah, you were there.
Is that correct, Mr. Anderson will draft a letter at the next meeting? Just wanna make sure.
It was correct at the time. In fact, it's still, it still is correct.
It is correct.
It is still correct.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Hasn't changed.
Second.
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, yeah, that's, that's the most accurate part of the meeting minutes for November fifteenth, November fourteenth.
Hey, whatever happened to that, uh, the garage?
No, yeah.
Right, what, did you have a meeting?
The vote was four to one again.
Four to one, it got, they lost their permit. So they were working under a permit from the building inspector, they appealed that, they wanted them to revoke the permit, and the ZBA voted to revoke the permit. Alright, motion to adjourn.
To, second, four to one to revoke the permit?
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Turn your back on now.
Oh, back on?
Building inspector can't do anything about it, he can't put a cease and desist until the ZBA writes up.
He already did a cease and desist, he already did a cease and desist.
Okay.
He already did a cease and desist, it was something.
So what, what level of construction were there?
Oh, he's got, he's got the walls up and everything.
All the walls are up now?
That's what I was told.
I saw, I saw steps.